Okay, we're rolling.
We're ready.
All right, welcome everybody. This is the Administrative Services Committee meeting. We are looking at Chapter 65, otherwise known as the Tree Ordinance. I'm the Chair Gina Gregory. Other committee members are Beth Rich and Fred Richardson. We also have with us Councilman Joel Davis. I see Peter Toler, who is our City Arborist. Are there any other folks from the administration on with us? I guess not. Okay, Peter, you were it.
Gina, Gina, I do have my two, my two assistants from Urban Forestry, Ms. Carla Rednicki and Mr. Joel Potter. And also attending the meeting is Dr. Bo Brodback with the State Extension.
Okay, all right, great. All right, I think everybody knows where we are on this. We have the working document that we have been discussing and trying to make changes as we go along for Chapter 65. And Chris has highlighted in yellow the changes from the current 64. Chris, am I correct on that? So everybody knows what it is?
That's correct.
Okay. These are changes that have been incorporated since we began. So some have come from the public, those that we have heard from on our previous committee meetings and some that were sent in by email. To get started, I thought it was best for Peter to once again go through the PowerPoint that he has, explaining what it is we're doing and why we're doing it. And then Peter, I know you have heard from some folks, some questions about concerns that they have. Some were very specific that you might get into. And if you need some reminding, we can help you with that. But go ahead and show us your PowerPoint and then just give us any, I guess, information that you think we need to have before we get into questions, if that's okay.
Absolutely. My screen share ability is disabled. If someone would enable that, please.
Oh dear.
Okay, hold on, I've got to get it back down here.
Madam City Clerk, I have felt your pain before.
And then I've also asked Peter if he would go ahead and email all of the council his PowerPoint, because we don't have all of our council members with us. And I think it would be beneficial to everyone to at least take a look at this PowerPoint. It would probably clear up a lot of things.
Okay, Peter, have you tried it?
It still says disabled.
Okay.
The message, the message is given, Lisa, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Okay, now try.
Yes, I got it now. Okay, can everybody see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Good afternoon, everybody. As you already know, my name is Peter Toler. I'm the Urban Forester for the City Mobile. I'm an ISA certified arborist and I'm tree risk assessment qualified through the ISA as well. I also hold a state credential being from through the Alabama Urban Forestry Association. I'm certified for urban forestry management through them as well. And this is a PowerPoint that myself, my department, and some of our key administrative people put together to present to you some basic key facts about what we feel are necessary amendments that need to be in place, not only for the protection of the trees, but also to give us the necessity to manage risk and liability. Okay, so I'll get right into it. Okay, so tree regulations, planting versus protection. Okay, the tree planting requirements on all our commercial sites basically get down to two bullet points. Proposed Unified Development Code and the Right Tree Right Place List. Right Tree Right Place for whatever species of trees that you pick. It gives you spacing, green space requirements, things like that. That is not what this chapter covers. In this chapter is Protection of Existing Trees. It's Chapter 65. Tree Protection Provisions, the role of the Urban Forester in tree protection and permit review, the role of the Tree Commission, and our tree trails. Now, in this, some of the key definitions that we feel really need to go into this. A, the American National Standards Institute and ANCA 300. In these two definitions, in a nutshell, there are nine robust sections of this that establish tree care standards. A, it would protect the city as far as any tree care decision for risk. Also, it establishes just pure point blank when a tree can be saved. And then in line number two, Arborist and Urban Forester. It will require the person managing the tree canopy for the City of Mobile to be an ISA certified arborist to ensure compliance with tree care standards. Here's the reason why this is important. Whether it's me or whoever that comes after me, the person in that role, being an ISA certified arborist, has sworn under codes and ethics to uphold the ANSI standards for tree care. And there is a mechanism that if those standards are violated, you can file a grievance against their certification, which is detrimental to that person. So that is a, that is an accountability mechanism for myself and any other person that manages the tree, the tree canopy for the city. Another definition that is of the utmost of importance, and this is just simplified down, is critical root zone and selective root pruning. We're a city, we evolve, we have new utilities go in, we have roadways that are built, et cetera, and so forth. Essentially, what critical root zone will do is, is it will, it will put into effect, based on an existing ANSI standard, the amount of root system needed to structurally hold that tree in the air. That is, that is of the utmost of importance if we expect to maintain our tree care canopy. Now, slide number four, Permit Procedure and Criteria. The elimination of automatic approval of permits. And here's the reason why this is important. There may be a request to trim or remove a tree, whether it be on, for whatever reason, some days, 10 days, is just not enough time to do the proper research or conduct the appropriate test on a tree to determine its fate. And that is, that to us is of the utmost of importance. Clarification of Tree Risk Evaluation Standards. I can't tell you enough how important this is. It references the ANCA 300 as a basis for tree risk assessment. And there is a uniform process for that. I feel with my conviction that that will be good for the city to adopt this process, because then you can establish if a tree is a low, medium, or high risk. And then we can act accordingly. All right, now, in this, Tree Protection and Risk Mitigation. All right, for bullet point number one, tree protection during construction. All right, so the tree protection during construction, the proposal is to require ANSI standards to protect the critical root zone. Again, the critical root zone is the amount of root system needed to give the tree the best chance to stay upright. That is, people ask why now, why this? After Sally and Zeta, especially right after Sally, we had over 600 locations with multiple trees down. I feel that if we get our tree care standard up to par with the national standards, this would lower the risk of having enough tree failures once the next storm comes through, or even severe weather that would help to protect our tree canopy. Now, in root, in construction protection, root pruning, things of that nature, it would require the supervision of an ISA certified arborist for selective root pruning. That's laid out in your ANSI standards. That's why the correlation between your ANSI standards comes in key, because there's processes laid out in all of this, okay? Then tree trimming removal companies. This bullet point is just very simple. Requires tree trimming or removal activities on public land and in public rights the way to be performed under the supervision of a certified arborist and shall be in compliance with ANCA 300 standards. There's that correlation again. That's where we want to carry it all the way across the board. So, I tried to simplify it. So my final thoughts on this, and obviously we'll get into much deeper discussion, is the proposed changes will enhance tree protection in the city. And here's what anybody that's carried on a conversation with me about this. There are always additional steps that can be taken. Recommendations through any of this aim to strike a balance between tree preservation and the impact of regulations on property owners. So that is, that is my simplified presentation. So, Councilman Gregory, I will turn it back over to you.
Okay. All right, thanks, Peter.
You're most welcome.
Are we getting that off the screen?
I did. I stopped sharing.
Okay, mine is still up. I don't know. Is it up for everybody else?
No, we're back to participants. At least my iPad is.
Yeah, mine has, mine still has the last slide up, so I guess it's just slow. I don't know what the problem is, but, all right. Well, let's go back to, while Peter is with us, there have been a lot of questions that have come up. Some from our colleagues and some from just the community. Peter, one of those questions has to do with private property. And Lisa's looking over my shoulder trying to figure this out. But one that has come up again, Peter, is about private property. And what change, if any, is in 65 that we are, that you have proposed? Also, the role of the Tree Commission, how is that impacted? Or is it impacted by what we are looking to do now? We're also have looked at diameter of trees. Do we decrease the diameter of trees for better protection? And also, do we increase the trees that we are looking at also to protect them? Increasing the variety of trees. We're also looking at restitution fines, fees, that sort of thing. If you can get started, at least Peter, on the private property question, just explain to us what's in your proposal, what was in 64 to begin with? And how do we deal with private property versus development when it comes to the tree protection?
Sure, absolutely. All right, I'll turn over here so I can make sure I'm looking at this way it's written. Basically, in a nutshell, the way private property tree permits are laid out, and it is that involves, and my wife will tell you I've been wrong at least once in my life, so. And on this, right now currently as written, it involves R1 and R2 undeveloped, in other words vacant lots, and it involves commercial property. Now, the difference as to now, as to what's proposed, is right now, the only trees that are requiring a permit whenever a piece of land is developed is a live oak that is 24 inches in diameter or larger. So, we looked at this from a couple of different perspectives. And I reached out to some, some urban foresters throughout the state. The common denominator on size of tree that's typically permitted is a 20-inch diameter tree. I found that in Fairhook Daphne, reached up anywhere from Montgomery, Mr. Russell Stringer, some of those other areas, very good gentleman to work with. Part of this as well, the reasoning for doing the smaller trees is in the good round number of 20 inches kind of boils down to critical root zone, risk management, and we don't want to infringe on private property owners. However, when the root zone of a tree is impacted to the point where it could fail into right of way, and as you can see from one storm, you can see many tree failures going into it. That's, that's kind of the direction we were going on this. We came up with a denominator based on our ability to respond. So that's, that's just kind of simplistically putting it out there.
Okay, so once again, let's talk about private property. Because we've had phone calls from people saying, you're taking away all of my property rights. You expect me to come get a permit to cut down trees on my own property?
Right, it is. Our proposal.
And I don't, I don't mean commercial, I mean residential.
Right. Right now, the way, the way the code is written, and also the way it's proposed, because I'll be honest with you, there is a balance that you have to achieve in something like this, is in historic districts, it's eight inches in diameter or larger. It's been that way since 1992. That seems to work out very well. When it comes to undeveloped lots and things of that nature, definitely wanted to drop the diameter a couple of inches. And also, my answer to anybody, and I would tell anybody on this Zoom anywhere, I'm not trying to take away your private property rights. I'm trying to open the chance up, make sure you're keeping a tree standing upright, that it will not fail into the right of way. That now, and if you notice in the criteria for issuance of a tree removal permit, if you're going to build a building on your place, if you're going to put a parking lot, and I did leave it to where it's, it's open for discussion, is the, is, that's, that's, that's kind of where we are on this. Because right now, the way it's proposed is R1 and R2 with existing structures is exempted from this. And that's, that's where the council, that's, that's where the big feedback would come.
So if it's R1 or R2 without an existing structure, what is the proposal?
The proposal is, it would be, the definition is proposed to be a heritage tree of 20 inches in diameter with the proposed species list that we have listed on there.
And currently, if it's R1 and R2 without an existing structure, it's just the heritage trees?
That's, that's correct. Uh, you mean the definition?
Well, or what the requirement are.
You mean as it's currently written?
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, as it's currently written, only if it's a live oak that is 24 inches in diameter or larger does it need to be permitted? And that's, that's all it is right now.
Okay, don't just give me a minute. I'm still trying to get back on. I've got to, Lisa, don't I have to go back through all this and dial in? Or not? And I can't hear you, so I don't know what you're saying. I guess I have to, give me a minute to dial back in. Yeah, the whole thing, right? So which am I dialing in, the meeting ID?
Yeah, um, don't worry about this.
So participant or which one? Meeting ID, all right.
Councilman Davis, Rich, and Richardson, do you want this PowerPoint sent to your council? City address, is that the address y'all would prefer, this PowerPoint?
Yeah, that'd be great. And as Gina mentioned to all council people, even those that are absent as well.
Okay, I'll send it to all of them.
Yes, thank you. There you are, Gina. And Lisa. Looking good.
Technology's grand when it works. So, I apologize, but I was trying to kind of get on, get back on the Zoom call as well as talking to Peter and listening at the same time. So I probably missed some of what you were saying. Because one of the complaints that we have heard, and Beth, you can chime in on this, and Fred, Joel, is about the private property thing. So if you don't mind, Peter, just one more time, go through what is currently existing for R1 and R2, and then what the proposal is.
Sure, absolutely. The current, the current code for R1 and R2 with, first off, R1 and R2 with a structure existing is exempt. With R1, R1 and R2 with no structure on the property, in other words, a vacant lot, currently right now, only if it is a 24-inch in diameter or larger live oak is a permit needed.
Okay. And so what we are looking at then, Chris, help with this on this proposal, what are we looking at changing then on the R1 and R2, with an existing or without an existing?
The, with a, with a structure, nothing's changing. They're just exempt. With, say, a vacant R1 or R2 lot, definition of heritage tree, instead of saying heritage live oak tree, we're just saying heritage tree, which is defined as a list of probably about 10 other trees. Cypress, hickory, longleaf pine, magnolia, oak trees, but not water oaks, river birch, sweet gum, sycamore poplar. And so it just adds to the list pretty significantly. And then the, one thing, what's being proposed here is an 18-inch BBH. That was kind of what we talked about last time, as opposed to 20, or, I think it was, was it 12 that was proposed last time? When this first came up? In any event, but it could be changed to whatever y'all agreed to.
Yeah, yeah, I think Chris brings up a good point. Adding to the list of protected trees is pretty significant. And we're probably going to get a lot of pushback on that.
But can I ask a question, Gina, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
And Peter might know this. You touched upon it. But if somebody rolls out their plans and their structure that they plan to put in, their curb cuts, their, their parking lot, if a tree that would normally get some oversight is in the way, that's usually permitted. I mean, do you see any change under the new code? I mean, in the past, it's only been a 24-inch oak, but we've seen those come down for sure when the building was programmed to be where that tree was, correct? I mean, who, who, would you be the one who sees those plans or whoever is in your position?
Yes, yes. The review process for anything like this, Beth, they're, they're supposed to bring to us and locate where the trees are. The key thing in it is, is right now in development, it's understood that you don't have to designate any other tree except the live oak on your plans. And that's, that's when, that's when, that's when things go through the cracks. So, so that's.
If we look at the CBS, I hate to keep bringing this up, but that was to me a poster child for some magnificent trees that every time I look at that lot, it, there is no building in, you know, or parking lot, and they could have been the tree buffer. They could have been some of the trees on the property. But they were not preserved because they weren't on the list. So the 12-inch oak, or, I mean, the 24-inch oak, there wasn't one out there. It had other maples and, you know, the ones on your list. So, I, I, I think that the development community is, is used to looking for the 24-inch oak. We are asking them to, to give more information. And again, if their plans were all out, that they have to get rid of them. I don't think the city's ever stayed in the way.
There is, if I may, there is really and truly a simple solution on this, in my, in my humble opinion, on if a tree can, and I'm not saying to infringe on rights, I'm simply stating this from a tree care standpoint. If you take a tree that is 24 inches in diameter, the formula that is laid out in our standard, you simply take that number, divide it by two, and whatever that number is, you convert that to feet. And that is the amount of distance away from that tree that you're not supposed to disturb soil. Every person that I've talked to in the development community and in the building community would love to have a standard like that to say, okay, I mean, because a lot of people, to be honest with you, they'll take a tree out because they just think cutting anything near it is going to, is going to destroy the tree. And there's actually a threshold you can establish now. That's, that's the whole key component of this.
So they would know ahead of time, is what you're saying?
Yeah, you would basically insert if this, then that scenarios into a development plan if you legitimately wanted to keep trees.
Right, yeah. And, and right now, is R1 and R2 undeveloped already under the wings of the 24-inch live oak?
Right, right. If somebody wants to build a house and there's a 24-inch in diameter large oak, live oak or larger on the property, it has to be permitted for removal. However, and, and the way that currently works is, is if somebody simply shows on a plan that the tree is in the building footprint or the improvement area, that is, that it's automatic issuance of the permit by city code.
Right, right. That's what I meant. We don't stand in the way. And we wouldn't necessarily stand in the way of other species, but we'd give them an opportunity to maybe survive the development if indeed they were not having their roots butchered at the same time.
Right, absolutely.
But the increase of the protected trees that we are looking at on the, on the working draft goes for residential properties as well as commercial properties. So everybody would fall under the same, same requirement, right, Peter?
That's correct, yes.
The additional trees as well as the smaller diameter.
Correct.
But they're already under the 24-inch or larger live oak today.
Right, that is. That is the single and only tree that is currently classified as being, as a necessity to permit.
All right, so just note that on this working graph that we've got, we do have additional trees to be protected. And I think the diameter in here is 18 inches, correct? Isn't that what we have in there?
Yes.
But Peter, you said 20-inch was something you, you thought was a standard on all species?
Correct. Every, every urban forester I've talked to, really 20 inches is, is the, a good round size to work with, because you're talking, that, that's where if you're developing, that will require 10 foot of area around that tree to be unobstructed. When you get smaller than that, that's, that's, it's just that the, the impact of a tree that's 20 inches in size when it fails is just cataclysmic. Don't get me wrong, it wouldn't hurt less to get hit by an 18-inch tree, but that's, that's the good round number that
I see.
Different colleagues throughout the state have come up with.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Peter, also, something that has come up has been the, the role of the Tree Commission and how or if it changes with this Chapter 65, a new Chapter 65. Can you speak to that?
Absolutely. For mine, the Tree Commission is a state-appointed board. Actually, Flo, are you on here?
Yes.
Flo, since this is a, having to do with state law, and I'd like to respectfully give you the opportunity to answer on that as the Tree Commission's role.
I'm sorry, I was looking at something else. What is the question?
Well, the question, Flo, is how or if we pass this Chapter 65, how is the Tree Commission impacted? Are there responsibilities impacted at all by what we are doing?
No, not that I'm aware of. Chris, I'm, Chris, are you aware of any additional responsibilities that have been included in the ordinance?
No, the, I would say this. The Tree Commission's established by state law. And this is, this doesn't apply just to the Tree Commission, but to anything we do. and this is, this doesn't apply just to the tree commission, but to anything we do. Really, cities in Alabama can only do what the legislature allows them to do. So the tree commission obligations and responsibilities and powers, uh, since they're already set by state law, there's really not anything we can do to change that. Now, there was a provision in there previously about, um, the foresters giving a report to the tree commission. That was taken out in the lap whenever we switched it over to 64 because that's not legal under the Zogby Act. We can't, the city council can't tell, you know, the administration people what to do specifically. So we fixed that, but otherwise it's the same as it was before.
And, and as far Flo and Chris, as you know, what we are doing does not usurp in any way what the tree commission does?
That's correct, I believe, yes.
I, I would say that's correct, too. The additional provisions talk about the urban forester. That's what's new over the current provisions in the zoning ordinance. Or the former provisions in the zoning ordinance, I'm sorry.
Okay, Flo, you mean the, what Chris just was talking about, about the urban forester making a report? That the, the council can't require the forester to make a report? Is that what you meant?
Uh, well, I, I meant just generally, this ordinance talks about, uh, some of the activities of the urban forester with respect to permitting and things like that. The, those are the, that's what this new version of 65 adds to the provisions that were excerpted from, uh, 64, chapter 64.
Right, but doing this from the urban, with the urban forester and anything else in this new chapter 65, that is not usurping the tree commission's responsibilities, is it?
Absolutely, correct. It is not. It is not usurping the tree commission at all. Those are parallel and supportive functions.
Okay. Um, let's see, what else? Uh, there was also a discussion about restitution, uh, maybe some fees and fines. And Beth has sent us, um, some suggestions. Peter, I'll go to you, and then anybody else who wants to chime in. Beth, maybe you want to explain it as well?
Well, it, it's, it's a model that's used in, in, um, other cities in the state. It's certainly a suggestion. It, um, any violation would go to, um, it's my understanding, can go to municipal court, and then there are caps on those fees, which I certainly understand, uh, on what the judge can, can authorize and their own, um, you know, determination of the problem to, but this is restitution to make funds available to, um, the city to purchase new trees, and it's based on the size of the tree that's been damaged. And so, again, it's, it's just a scale. It, it doesn't have, it's not in stone, so to speak, but it does tell the court that we take our trees in public. These are just trees on public rights of way, very serious, and we would like to see some return for that damage. Not just a, you know, a return to the court system, in other words.
Okay, Peter?
Yes, um, in, in, in this proposed sec-, uh, proposed portion, I, I go back to the ANSI standards and care for trees and how that is of the utmost of importance. And once damage is done to a tree, and there, there are standards that weigh that, which I hope will be added to 65, there, there is a, a time investment you don't get back. And I know people go on both sides of the spectrum on environmental and other type of impacts, but there's, there's some studies I read that trees add 5% property value to wherever it fronts if the tree is in good shape. And if a tree is irreparably damaged, according to the ANSI standards, there needs to be some type of a deterrent to stop and oops, shall we say, because the, the, the punishment is so cheap right now to just walk out and cut down a tree that you want. It's almost a project line item. And, and again, I'm not here to tell you no on whatever it is you're doing. I'm here to educate and want to implement current industry standards so we can all coexist and evolve, in my opinion, correctly as far as our tree canopy goes. And some people don't feel any way about trees. Trees are my life. I love trees. And, but there's, there's certain balances you have to achieve. And this right here is, is, in my humble opinion, a deterrent to say, hey, I know you have a project, but we have a process. If you go outside the process, this is what you could face. And with all due respect to everybody on the Zoom, I have asked around the tree care community over the past 30 days, and there are some people that have had to pay out of this restitution, and guess what? They have said, I will not deviate from the process again, and they make a full-time living working across the bay. So this is, this is a good check and balance, in my opinion. But I'm one person out of this that has to decide on this process. So that's, that's my words in this.
Any, any other questions or comments?
Uh, Councilwoman Gregory?
Is that Flo?
Yeah, this is Flo. Let me just say, um, I, I absolutely hear what Peter's saying, and it, and it's, and it's a, you know, it's a really good point. You know, my concern here is that the Tree Act that we were talking about before the state law sets a fine, i- and that fine is a maximum of $500. So, uh, you know, I, I know we've discussed before the concept of restitution, which I think Chris has, has said, and I absolutely agree with him, restitution can always be ordered by a court, but that would be on a case-by-case basis. So if you put into an ordinance a schedule of fines that doesn't really look like restitution, that looks like a fine that's in excess of $500. So, um, you know, at that point, when, you know, then we, you know, we get into the question of what is the council's legal authority to impose such a, such a, but, uh, it can't be a fine because the state law caps the fines. So it's gonna have, it would have to be characterized as some sort of fee. There is, uh, there is a series of cases that question, um, impact fees that are charged by, uh, cities and whether the sums collected are put back into the purpose to, to, um, uh, remedy the harm that was caused by the cit-, that was caused to a city by whatever action is being punished. So I, it, short answer would be, uh, I would be very careful about imposing, uh, those fees without a, a review of that, of those cases with Mr. Arledge. You know, and, yeah, it's just like anything else. Other, other cities may have done it, and other cities may not have yet been challenged. That doesn't mean necessarily that they would sustain challenge if they were challenged. Um, and, and I really can't say that I've researched this enough to say that they wouldn't. But I, I do think that we're, you know, that, that is a sensitive area that, that would certainly require further research.
Can I ask a question, Gina? To, to Flo, if this is a recommendation to the court in a scale that talks about the value of this public tree, a- and it's left to the judge's discretion, just like, I mean, the 500, they, they, they don't have to go all the way up to the 500. That's the max they can charge. So is it the language we have to use in order to get the scale in there? Because you are talking about the value of the tree, the drainage issue. I mean, there's a, a- and again, it sets a statement, and it hopefully it puts people in the right direction to follow the process and not, um, you know, be abusive, because if they just cut it down and the judge says it's, you know, X dollars, that's probably more to their liking, but it, it's not to the public's liking from a value standpoint, aesthetic, or, you know, environmental and, and whatnot. So if it's a recommendation, could, could it still be part of this ordinance? Of what the value of those trees are and the size of the tree that was abused?
That, that, uh, uh, that's an interesting concept. I can't say that I, offhand, I can't think of an ordinance. I've looked at that, that is drafted in that form where uh, the council through its legislative authority proposes a recommendation on what a tree would cost. It seems like, it seems to me a little bit of a combination of fact-finding and legislation that I'm really not familiar with. You know, I would defer to Mr. Arledge if, if he has any thoughts on that. I, you know, I can't, I can't say that it couldn't be done, but, um, i- it's, I'm not, I, I don't, I can't think that it, I've seen that done.
I see. But the, but, uh, can a tree have a value? Do we, do we know that for a fact based on its size? Or is this a, um, an untangible thing?
I think that that would-
I think it can have a value. For sure, but I think it can have a value. It's, you know, who decides what that value is? It would depend on the tree, where it is, what it looked like, you know?
Right.
There's a lot of circumstances. On, on your, um, proposed revision, there's two, pretty much two sections. One, there's a restitution, a recommended restitution section.
Right.
So that's saying, okay, uh, judge, if you order restitution, this is what we think, uh, would be a, a good amount. The judge can accept that or not accept it.
Right, sure, yeah.
And then the second section is the fees for permitted tree removal. And that's what I think Flo was talking about with the impact fees, basically is what it is. And that one gives me a little heartburn. If, I, I can't think of a reason you couldn't recommend, you know, whatever. If y'all are comfortable with these figures, but you might be pushing the envelope on the second part.
If, if I may?
Who, who was that?
It's, it's Peter.
Oh, Peter, yeah, go ahead.
Councilman Richardson was speaking first, but he was muted.
Oh. Welcome, welcome back to Fred. Fred, unmuted, okay.
Owning ordinance, a resolution could be a recommendation. An ordinance is the law. We, we, and this is a tree ordinance, and what we're setting, we're setting the law. We're not trying to establish what we recommend. We're establishing what the law is in the city mobile as it pertains to a tree. Now, we want to issue a resolution on the side and say, we recommend this, that, and others by trees, and you, and you define the value of tree by this. We can, we can do that by resolution. We're, we're dead with creating a new ordinance, chapter 65, on the tree ordinance. And we, we can't be, uh, saying, we're not saying for sure. We, we just recommend. That's not an ordinance. It's a resolution. Ordinance got to be defined and specific so folk will know. Uh, so I, I think if the state has a fine and they have kept the fine, they've set a cap, that ought to be the cap for the fine. That, that ought to be the cap for the fine. The state has already set the cap. And we may feel that the state cap ought to be changed, but if the state legislators let them go up in Arga to elevate that cap to something else. But I don't think we ought to try to railroad over the state and try to create something that is inconsistent with what the state has said.
Peter?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Councilman Richardson. And Councilman Gregory, there is, there is actually a formalized process to establish the value of the tree. And it's, uh, and Dr. Broadbeck and Dale Dickens on here can attest that it's the Guide to Plant Appraisal, volume 10. It comes from the Society, I believe, of Municipal Arborists. So there is a, uh, a, a process out there to determine the value of the tree. And it's, it's a pretty lengthy process. But that's, that's just some feedback from me on that.
Beth, on, on this, I, I think we, we were talking about this, and did you, didn't you take this from the city of Fairhope?
Yes.
Do they do this in Fairhope?
Yes.
Well, if the state has a, a cap of 500, how were they able to do this?
Well, you heard Flo say that no one's challenged it.
Challenged it?
I, I think that's the way I understood what she said. You know, they, they get serious about their trees and people abide by it, knowing that that has a value to the public. And, you know, the public would want to replace the, the best they could when one was, you know, didn't go through the due process and was just cut down on their own volition.
The end of this, Montgomery has red light cameras. The state has outlawed red light cameras. But Montgomery has red light cameras. So I guess Mobile can put up red light cameras until the state stops. That's what they're doing over there.
Councilwoman Gregory?
Yes, go ahead, Flo.
Yeah, if I could just, uh, add, uh, to follow up on what Councilman Richardson said, this law that we're talking about, we're saying state law, but it's a, it, it's a law that applies to the city of Mobile. So, uh, so, so number one, it's not going to apply to Fairhope so that it won't be a, a factor in, in a set, in determining the Fairhope ordinance, although I think there are other issues that apply to the Fairhope ordinance. But, but the other factor to consider that I think Councilman Richardson just raised is that because it is a local law, uh, you know, it would be possible to amend that law, you know, through legislative action. That is something that legislative delegation would support.
So you're saying in order for us to do something different, other than the $500 cap for restitution and/or for fees, we would need to go to the legislature and ask them to do it for us?
That would certainly be the safest, most straightforward, uh, form of amending, uh, the current law.
Okay, well, I guess we can marinate on that a little bit and see where we get. All right. Uh, any other questions of Peter? And I, and Peter, I see you've got some of your other folks here. Did they want to weigh in on, uh, on any of this, Peter?
Uh, it looks like Bo's still here. I believe that's Bo, and it looks like Dale Dickens is there. Dale, Bo, if y'all want to take a couple of seconds and, uh, just speak out on this?
Sure, thanks, Peter, and, uh, thanks for having me on. As Peter said, my name is Bo Broadbeck. I work with Auburn University Extension, and Peter asked me to sit in. I don't have the documents in front of me y'all are looking at. And, you know, with, you know, the discussions that y'all had as valuing trees, you know, and having some type of teeth in an ordinance to discourage somebody, as Peter noted, as putting it as an aligned item. And I'm not a lawyer, so I don't understand all the legal processes, but having something that has somebody think twice before causing damages. Because as, we have to remember that we have trees that were planted by, you know, generations ago, and once we damage these trees, there's no going back. We can't put them back together, and the cost of remediating damage is actually far more expensive uh, than preventing damages. And so these ordinances that can prevent damages encourage people to follow some of the best management practices, which Peter has outlined with his ANSI standards, um, is in the best interest of everyone. You know, when we live in a, in a city, we, we accept that we have ordinances and rules so that we can all live for the public, for the public good. And so, you know, I would encourage y'all to look at those, um, and try to put as many teeth as you can, realizing that they don't always have to be applied in every case necessarily. But when, when something's done that's egregious, you have the teeth in place to be able to respond and set a- Um, but when, when something's done that's egregious, you have the teeth in place to be able to respond and set examples. But anyway, that is all I have. And if anybody has any other questions or comments, I'll, I'll help out any way I can. Thanks for allowing me to speak.
Joel, did you want to say anything?
No, thank you. I've been listening carefully, but I don't have anything I want to add. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Potter?
I, I really don't know that I have to.
Been a day for technology.
Outside of what Peter and Bo just said, um, you know, there, I, I feel like there doesn't, there does somehow need to be more teeth than just, because it's a lot easier just to take a fine and take a big tree like that in a lot of cases than work around it. But it's, of course, got to be done legally. But really outside of what they said, I don't really have much to expand upon.
Okay, appreciate that. All right. Fred, uh, Joel, Dave, I know you said you didn't have anything else. Fred, Beth, anything else?
No, it's a good conversation and I hope it's, um, something we take into consideration and figure a way to do it.
Peter, anything else? Oh, Fred, go ahead.
You know, I would like to say, uh, whatever law we pass, it seems to me, um, that the city itself has been, uh, has caused a detriment to a lot of our trees. For instance, on it, when you go into the tristan tenure, you're parked out. The whole north side was littered all the way down with huge oak trees, beautiful oak trees. And MARS was given this, the city council didn't have nothing to say. Was given permission to cut down almost every one of, I had no, I went in there one day. The trees was out there. I came back the next day, the trees were down. They have not planted the first tree. Took them all down. So I'm saying, we, we, we talk about fine, we, we can't be our own worst enemy. Can't be our own worst enemy. That was, uh, MARS could have gone downside. The creek could have gone somewhere else. But they chose, chose to go down over there by, at least I would hate them to agree. Because that's what we're trying to say in this ordinance. If you're going to cut a tree down, you got to plant a tree. If it's a real big tree, you might need to plant two trees for everyone. They have not planted the first tree over there. We can't be our own worst enemy. We can't pass a strict law for everybody as we come and just gun down the whole ordinance and just keep on moving like it is not about anything. So, uh, whatever we say is going to have to apply to everybody.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, well, I agree with that.
If I could comment, I remember that. And it was MARS and a plan that I think at the time our parks director gave permission for, unfortunately. I'm not saying any of that was right. I'm not trying to excuse, but, uh, it was not the city doing it. It, MARS and they got permission from the Parks Department.
That's us, that's the city.
Yes, oh, the city, yes, the city was part of the equation, yes.
Councilman Gregory, if I may?
Go ahead.
This is, this is where in the new proposed ordinance, where critical root zone will come into play to where there's guidance and written robust steps on how to work around a tree. And that's, that's part of my conviction. And Councilman Richardson, I agree. It should apply to everybody and we should have a standard in place that applies to everyone. Absolutely. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, and the same sort of thing can be said for, for instance, our sidewalk projects. Um, a lot of times we, we have contractors who want to just go straight down a road, even if it means cutting down a big tree. And we've gone round and round with them and said, no, you can go around that tree and you have a meandering sidewalk. And those are prettier anyway. So, yes, sometimes we are our own worst enemies. I, I would agree with that. But thank you, Peter. Appreciate, you know, what you were trying to do. Sometimes it's baby steps, but at least they are steps. And, uh, the more we do, the better we will be. So thank you for that.
And, and, and I will say this, and this is why we're wanting to put standards in place. The Parks Director at the time is no longer even with the city. And if we have standards set out, it doesn't matter who you are, you have to follow those standards. And that's, that's yet another, uh, reason to make sure to include these industry standards that are followed by any certified professional in the tree care industry.
All right. Okay, uh, before we move on, uh, Joel, Dave, you didn't have anything else either, right? Okay, uh, we've got some folks who have been with us since the beginning. Thank you all for staying on and appreciate your patience. We got, um, um, a document from the Tree Commission folks. And I see Jesse is, uh, on with us. And Jesse, it, it appears that, um, you all just went through and redid the whole thing. I don't know, were you, it, I was, uh, trying to make sure that I was keeping up with exactly where you were, you know, in, in your, uh, rework, uh, going along with the, uh, proposed draft that we have. Um, some of it looks like it's, it's taken from maybe the current sixty-four, some of it's from this, I'm not sure. But, um, I don't want to go through it line for line because this is going to take all day. But if, if you would just give us some highlights of some of the things that you think are most important, then I think everybody can go through and read what you have sent us, uh, to see if it's something that we want to include. Um, some of it appears, uh, like the very first of the purposes that y'all have gone in and just summarized, you know, some of the sections. And then in some areas, it is, um, some word changes, uh, being more specific in some of them. Um, so Jesse, if you would, maybe hit the highlights for us.
Yeah, and Councilwoman Gregory, I'm gonna reserve, uh, the opportunity, uh, to address the committee. Uh, but I want to defer to my vice chair, Teresa Testner. She is, uh, the one who, uh, drafted that document. So I'd like her to speak to that specifically before I get into any, uh, highlights for you. If that's okay, if that's okay.
That's fine. I didn't, uh, know who had, had done the bulk of the work. And Teresa has certainly done a lot of work on this.
Yes, so.
Thank, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Gregory and to the rest of the committee. So I have just a few prepared remarks that kind of will summarize where we were going. Because again, we did make a lot of specific, uh, suggestions based on deficiencies that we had seen in the past sixty-four, four eight chapter. And then, you know, based on what, uh, the committee had put together after its first meeting. So, thank you. Uh, I, I'd like to start by acknowledging the work Urban Forester, Peter Toller, and this committee have done so far to draft and improve tree protections ordinance. The addition of ANSI A three hundred standards to the maintenance and protection procedures for our public and heritage trees is a major step forward. Furthermore, we support the expanded definition of heritage tree to include tree species besides live oaks that are also important contributors to our tree infrastructure. And we appreciate that you have reduced the minimum DBH to, to qualify for heritage status to eighteen inches. Um, based on the comments we've heard earlier today, I understand that there's some concern from, uh, private landowners about, um, that, those changes. But I would ask you to consider the public good that comes from trying to protect these more mature trees that are workhorses in our, um, city. Um, we applaud, we also appreciate that the concept of restitution for the damage or removal of public inherited trees has now been included. And we applaud the continued engagement of this committee in the drafting of the tree protections chapter and look forward to discussing further the comments we emailed to this committee ahead of today's meeting. Besides some housekeeping type suggestions regarding definitions or phrasing and some changes to procedures having to do with vacancies on the Mobile Tree Commission, our comments center on two broad areas. Policy changes to expand and better define tree protections and policy changes to strengthen implementation and enforcement of the tree ordinance. In some cases, we may not have provided specific suggestions, but rather expressed our continuing concern that aspects of these areas still need to be addressed. We continue to advocate that the tree protections ordinance should apply to all parcels in the city, including those zoned R one and R two, whether they have a habitable structure or not. I'd like to make it clear that nothing we are proposing prevents any homeowner or land developer from removing a hazardous tree. Our proposal does not prevent someone from building on their land. What it does prohibit is removing a healthy heritage tree from any site unless it is in the way of a building. And that building plan cannot be modified to accommodate the tree. It simply requires reasonable efforts be made to have the building plan try to work around a heritage tree on the site before allowing that tree to be removed. The comments we submitted for today's meeting also incorporate additional ANSI standards and best practices for the maintenance and protection of public heritage and preserved trees during construction and various kinds of land clearing and ground disturbing activities. Of particular concern was that the drafts presented to date did not provide enough protections for the critical root zone of trees during construction or other types of groundwork. And that there was not enough consideration for protecting adjoining off-site heritage trees whose canopy or critical root zone might extend into the site being worked on. In the area of enforcement, we are asking that several additional sections be considered. These would provide suggested restitution guidance, set out conditions under which revocation of a business license would occur for continued infractions by commercial entities, include procedures for work started without a permit, and the enabling of stop work orders. We also ask that the ordinance be carefully reviewed to make sure it contains the necessary language so that proper permitting and protections for trees occurs ahead of building, land disturbance, or land clearance. Continued work to draft a tree protections ordinance that promotes and maintains tree infrastructure is worth the effort. Good tree protections and management don't discourage economic development, they promote it. Business districts with trees have nine to twelve percent higher consumer spending than business districts without trees. Employers locate and expand where cities provide good management of infrastructure and city services per tax dollar and where they can attract and retain the talent they need to be successful. We know that trees reduce the negative impacts of stormwater, flooding, wind, heat, and air and groundwater pollution for not just individuals, but also city governments. As an example, the New Orleans twenty twenty tree preservation study found that their twenty nineteen inventory of public trees alone offered benefits to the city over six point five million dollars annually. Approximately two point one million of that was in reduced stormwater management costs. One point three million was in reduced energy consumption by the city. And there was nearly three million in economic value to public health and safety. Thank you for your consideration and we look forward to continued dialogue on our submission.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And, uh, Jesse, did you want to?
I'll briefly add to that. I think Reese has done a great job of articulating, uh, the vast majority of, of our input. I just wanted to return really quickly to a cup, one thing I heard a moment ago. Councilman Richardson, that MARS project, uh, I recall that came to the Tree Commission, uh, a couple of years ago. And it was one of those instances where the utility submitted a certification to the Tree Commission that those trees had to be removed. And so if you review the state law, uh, setting up the Tree Commission, it, it basically allows utilities to certify that they can, that they need to remove those trees. And there's really nothing that the Tree Commission can do about that. Uh, that, and I encourage y'all to review that section of the state law. I don't, I don't want you to think that I agree with that, but, uh, that's what it is. And so that is unfortunate, what the councilman was describing. But back to chapter sixty-five.
Hold on, just, just one thing. Did the law say anything about replacing a tree if you take it out? The same, did the same law say anything about having, if you're going to take one out for the purpose of, of your utility company? Or that you had to replace it and like, uh?
Not with regard to the utilities, sir. No, sir. And I, and I disagree with, with that as a, a starting point, but that's the way that it is right now. Um, so if, if the law needs to be amended, then there's certainly room for improvement there as well. But on chapter sixty-five, I want to touch on just a couple of things. I want to reemphasize the economic value of trees and ju, public trees. They are a, uh, economic asset as well as a public health asset. The increased property value, the decreased stormwater, uh, management costs, and, and all the things that we enjoy about the trees. That they look good, they provide shade, and they filter our air. So we see our jobs as being advocates for these trees because they desperately need advocates here in the city mobile. Because right now, there basically is no consequence for cutting down a public tree. And that is something that I want to just urge everyone who might be listening to find that unacceptable. And so, yes, the state law may cap a fine at five hundred dollars, but we have to think creatively in terms of how are we going to protect these trees? Uh, the, if the state tree act is supposedly to protect trees, but yet it caps, uh, the penalty at five hundred dollars, it's really just a paradox. It, it's a contradictory law because it's creating its own demise. And so, um, I want us to just really spend some time thinking about how we can get to that enforcement with regard to restitution. Uh, and we have to, we have to. And then also on the, uh, other benefits of the schedule being in there is that it would give a citizen, a business, a developer, a judge, all readers of that document would understand what the consequences would be potentially, uh, if a judge found them guilty and ordered restitution. Uh, so it would be clear to the reader what those consequences are. And you heard testimony earlier from Peter that that is effective. It is effective in his industry. And, and so right now, uh, if, if the Tree Commission is going to be an advocate for the trees, we're going to get down into the housekeeping issues and, and we're going to give you a lot of hopefully good suggestions about how we can beef up the enforcement with regard to the business licenses, with regard to the restitution. But, um, you know, we are looking to be good faith partners on this, but we still feel like we have some work to, to do. Uh, I want to commend you all for your work that you've put into this. And thank you for the changes that have been made. There's been some, some positive change. And so, uh, I just wanted to reemphasize those couple of points and, uh, encourage a continued dialogue because any good policy, uh, is going to have that collaboration and dialogue. That's so, so important. And we're glad to be a part of it.
All right. That's great. Thank you, Jesse. Appreciate that. Uh, I see Bill Boswell has been hanging with us. Bill, are you still there? And do you want to speak?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilman, uh, I, uh, woman, I appreciate that. Um, I will, uh, just make a few brief statements. I very much would like to urge, uh, the city council to, I guess, take, uh, Councilman Rich advice about, you know, going towards, uh, putting together to the state legislature, uh, to make some dramatic changes in, in the state law. Um, I mean, obviously, we've, we've all been, uh, heard today, and I think most of us knew that we had very many, uh, constraints, um, put on the, the tree act, um, on Mobile's ability to change our ordinance by the tree act. So it's really going to take, uh, leadership, uh, from the city council and from the city itself, uh, to approach the legislature. And, um, I will, uh, certainly, uh, uh, try to get as much, um, neighborhood support, uh, to, uh, bear, uh, to the legislature, uh, to, uh, attempt to make those changes. I think every city ought to be able to, to. I think every city ought to be able to, to have an ordinance that fits their needs. And Mobile is, is different from different other areas of, of the state, and we need to have an ordinance that fits the needs of our, our city. Now, saying that, I think Peter again has done an excellent job in putting forth a, a much better ordinance than we had. And I think that there are some very valuable recommendations that the Tree Commission committees have, have put together as well. I would like to just say in a couple of the recommendations that we, we put forward, what we are really needing to have is more outside expertise. Peter brought in some, some of that today, and I think that this committee and the council would benefit in pursuing that, trying to get information about what we're trying to do with these, this ordinance, recommendations from universities and with urban forestry, so that we can make sure we're getting the best information and ordinance possible for us. The, one of the other subjects that I wanted to just briefly touch on was how and if we can do this, before and when it was under Ordinance 64, any appeal to the urban granting or denial of a permit went back to the Planning Commission. Since we're taking that away from the Planning Commission, it only makes sense to me that the Tree Commission should be the first stop for the, the appeal process, and then it goes to the City Council. There, there are multiple reasons for that. I, you know, the Tree Commission is the commission that you guys have, have appointed to, you know, take care of tree issues. I don't, and you also have a zillion other topics to take care of. I don't know that you want to be approached on every appeal that comes as a result of either granting or denial of a, of a, of a permit. That should, in my mind, be an, a easy flow to the Tree Commission to take care of the bulk of those, and then those that can't be decided, you know, sent to the City Council. That, that, to me, would be a simpler route than hearing all of the appeals that, that will come from this process that's written into the, into the ordinance. Another area of, of concern to me is that, is the idea that city parks and city property is not included under the city, under the Tree Commission's authority. Touched on that in your first meeting. I would hope that you would give that consideration. I mean, the situation that, again, Councilman Richardson brought up about the, the, the trees being cut down through the parks, you know, that is something that I think the Tree Commission, even though it, as Jesse said, had little authority to stop it, at least it can be made more public. And that's what the, one of the main jobs I think the Tree Commission could do would be to make things like that more public before it happens and not something that has to be dealt with after the fact. Another situation is, and we didn't make this recommendation because we really didn't know how or where we could, we could put it. It's the idea of some type of notification for neighborhoods when some major work is being done. Peter and I discussed a situation that just recently happened in my neighborhood where a, a very reputable tree, a contractor that the city hired came in and did some work, and there were a couple incidents of damage in, in the neighborhood. Fortunately, this was, again, a very, a very reputable contractor, and they took care of it. Unfortunately, there, there will be situations that that would not be the case or might not be the case if the neighborhood doesn't know what's going on. My neighborhood had some eyes on the process as it was going on with some tree cuttings, and so we were able to, you know, point that out. If, if there is some type of way that neighborhoods could be made aware training or maintenance was going to be done, that would at least alert the people in the neighborhood that something is up and could have some ability to maybe avoid some, some major situations. And as I did that day, and others have contacted Peter, and Peter comes right out and makes sure that, you know, no more damage is done or damage is not done. So again, we're indebted to, to Peter for his dedication on that issue. But overall, I, I do appreciate what you guys have been doing over this process. I hope you will continue the back and forth with those of us who are, are concerned about the urban forest and keep us in the loop, so to speak. And I, I look forward to seeing what other steps you guys will do to make this a, a stronger ordinance for the city. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate that. And Chris, you're here. Just wanted to address the appeals. Correct me if I'm wrong. State law requires that these appeals go to the council, which is why we changed it that way, right?
Yes, ma'am. That's part of it. And, you know, again, the Tree Commission, we can't take away from their power, and we can't add to their power. State law, I mean, already says what they can and can't do.
Yeah. It's not like we're looking for extra things to do, that's for sure. Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
And, and I appreciate hearing from Mr. Boswell, too, about, you know, some more initiatives, but as Chris just mentioned, our hands are tied in that it's a state-enabling authority, so any changes would have to come through the State House. Right now, it's trees on private, it only on rights of way. I always thought, I'll be honest with you, I thought it, it did involve our parks, thinking that that's, you know, just about the right of way. But, so I think this, there needs to be an initiative publicly and, and, and with this council, if, if there's an agreement to ask our legislators to look at that authority granted back, was it back in the 60s, and it's probably never been updated? So, and all those suggestions are wonderful to do that. So there's, I, you know, I, I just, we wish we could do it. It, it would be great, but, you know, obviously, we don't have that authority. It's got, it's because we don't, you know, have all the rights. It has to go through Montgomery.
Okay. Anybody else before we get to what our next steps need to be?
How far we got to go, Gina?
Well, hopefully not too far. I, I would say that-
You, you're going to have to limit discussions, Gina. We can't, you got the, you got the set of time limit like we're doing all committees. We're going to discuss something. You can't, we just can't just do that as we're being here to, on tonight. Then we did with trees. We not did with no humans. We did with trees. And let- Now, but I'm saying, as we go, as we go forward, try to get to the end of it, whoever is going to speak, is going to have to have a defined time to say what they got to say, because we, we're probably, we're the red, we have seen, we got two, three versions of ordinance. All we're trying to do is move, get rid of Chapter 64, move over, create Chapter 65, and put these center things in 65 that we need to have in there. But some of the things that I heard discussed, council can't do that. I mean, we are legislators. We create the law. For instance, the idea of notifying, put something in here so people have to be notified. Council, we can't, the council can't give instructions to the administration. All city employees, all city equipment, this, this, that's, that's the mayor, under, under the mayor, we can't, we can't tell the mayor, you know, in no law that you're going to have to send out, no, we, we, we can't, we can't do that. That is something that, once we get the law passed, that the citizens, the Tree Commission could tell the mayor, we want you to send out notices, and that's, we can't make the mayor do the same thing as restitution. We can't create the law and then tear the jurors down. If you break the law, we want you to, to make them pay 12. We can't restitution. The jurors determine what the restitution is after the law been broken. We set the law. If they break the law, he can set restitution. We can't create the law, then come back and tell them what restitution is. So I'm saying, we got to keep this in our own vein. We can't do no more of what we can do. We're legislators.
Ms. Gregory? Reggie Hill would like to address, he was trying to get your attention in the chat.
Oh, oh, I, I saw his picture. I thought maybe that was left over from earlier. Okay. Reggie, you there?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair, to the members of the committee, to the administration, citizens, stakeholders of Mobile. Good afternoon. Reggie Hill, 1007th Century. Thank you all for the effort that you made into this. Being a resident district two, the trees are very important and vital to this community. I just had a very brief question. How can the public have access to the PowerPoint that was presented today to Mr. Toler and the proposed ordinance by the council attorney, please?
Okay, why, why don't we see if we can put a link on our Facebook page or something, Lisa? Can we do that?
Okay.
Okay. That's all I need. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
All right. Okay. And if there's not anything else, I think we've had a really good discussion. One of the things I think we would like to marinate on is the restitution side of things. Maybe Flo and Chris can put their thinking caps on and see if there's a way to insert it. If not, then I think the idea is to possibly go to the legislature, ask them for some help with, with that, as well as maybe the appeals and parks. And if there's anything else, just let me know if I've missed it. We have some suggested language and beefed up enforcement ideas by the Tree Commission that may or may not be something that the council wants to try to insert into our current draft. If you all will take a look at that and see, and Peter, you too, on this, if you will take a look at all of those and see if you want to insert that language, change the language from 65 that we have now to this language, let's just work on that this week and see how this current draft evolves, if you will.
Gina, can we have, can we send that to our, to our attorney? Let him make a recommendation to us?
Yeah, Chris has it. Chris has it.
But let him make a recommendation to us?
Well, I mean, I, I think it would be good to hear from council members if there's anything that they would specifically like to see inserted from that Tree Commission language. If there's not, then there's not. But instead of having Chris go through and do it himself, I mean, he's already given us his draft. So Beth, Fred, Joel, John, anybody who's listening in, if there's anything in the Tree Commission's suggestions that you would like to see inserted into 65 or changed into 65, just go ahead and read through it and see.
Right. No, I, I appreciate that offer to, to look at that. And I, I think the, the key to this is the standards, the national standards, that if we make that, the, the overall umbrella of what is the guidance for how a tree is established or stays in place or is cut down, then we're going to help ourselves, because right now we, we don't have any of that. So that, that to me is a big part of it. And, you know, restitution, like I said, I, I think it was excellent from the gentleman who mentioned about preventing, and I think that's what that does. And so if we could somehow work that in, but if it means going to the State House, I, I, I think that'd be slim to nil ever seeing it happen. There's, there's too much politics up there, and-
Well, that's why I said, put on your thinking caps and see if there's a way to make it happen.
Ms. Gregory?
Yeah, Chris?
Fred had an idea on the restitution. Instead of putting it in the ordinance, make a resolution on the side. What do y'all think about that?
Well, if, if the judges can use that, I mean, if they are allowed to use that and go above the $500 cap, I mean-
It's, I mean, it's, the restitution is to, it's like if I keyed your car, you know, there's a criminal penalty which goes up to the $500, then there's the money to fix the car.
Right.
So that's what the restitution is. They can order that right now. They just have to have somebody come testify as to what that value is. So, you know, the recommendations, it don't really bother me. I don't know that that would kill the ordinance. The, the fees, that, that kind of does bother me.
Okay. Well, why don't we think about that? That sounds like it may be the answer, then.
That would be good, because coming out of the State House, slim to nil would be what would happen with that. So I, I think it's a guidance for the judge to know how serious the city was. That's basically what you're telling, the value that that tree has, and then hopefully to prevent abuse in the future.
That's our opinion. That's not the law.
Hey, Fred, you're the one with the recommendation here, buddy.
The law is me, what the judge got to go by and see. Restitution happens after the law been broken. And we, we can't tell the judge, the law said fine him $25, but we want, we want you to also make him pay restitution. We can't, that's the judge's discretion. That's not the council's discretion, not restitution.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Well, let's take a look at the proposals from the Tree Commission, see if there's anything you want to insert. Send that to Chris, and let's see if we can't get this Chapter 65 fixed up in a way that we can get it on the agenda. Did we lay this over, what, for just one week?
Yes.
Because it was the first ring today, yeah.
Yes.
So if we have something new that's ready to put on the agenda next week, it could be either, I guess, an amendment, Chris, or a substitute, depending on how many changes are made, or just lay it over again if we're not ready.
Yeah, let's, let's see what, how much stuff it is. That'll give us an idea.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All right. Anybody else? All right. Do I hear a motion?